Please stand for flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's good to see a crowd here tonight. Must be something going on some people want to hear about or comment about. And as far as council goes, it is good to see everyone here in Bible before change, not in some faraway state or sunshine in, well, somewhat Florida, but that's beside the point. All right. First on the agenda, approval of minutes. Does everyone have a chance to read those, any additions or updates? And they stand approved as is. Report of town manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mayor Stanley, members of council. A few administrative things to cover tonight. One is the annual statement regarding trick-or-treating, which I feel compelled to share. We've posted on social media, but for the record also, I will note that some communities in Virginia choose the date, time, and other restrictions associated with Halloween trick-or-treating. However, the town of Bedford does not. We encourage those who choose to participate in trick-or-treating to plan ahead and exercise caution. Citizens are encouraged to use flashlights when walking on neighborhood streets and to supervise children as they go from house to house. Town also encourages those driving around the community during the evening hours on October 31st to exercise extra caution in light of potential weather-related conditions, as well as the likely presence of trick-or-treaters on or near neighborhood streets. Also on a service note, I did want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that Bedford County provides 25 different drop-off and/or full-service convenience centers for solid waste disposal throughout the county. They're open daily from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. with the exception of six specific holidays when they are closed. They're well-maintained and well-staffed, and this service is provided to all citizens of Bedford County and is actually tax-funded, which means that if you're a town resident, you're paying for this service whether you use it or not. So I felt like it might be a good idea to bring everybody's attention to the service itself. Next week, there will be a community open house in conjunction with the Flora Apartments at the former Bedford Middle School and also Bedford High School site that will take place on Wednesday, October 22nd. The community open house will occur from four o'clock p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Again, that's Wednesday, October 22nd. The next week, Lowe's Hometown Heroes program is funding some repairs and improvements to Liberty Lake Park, specifically the building adjacent to our main pavilion, and they will be kicking off that work on Wednesday, October 29th. And once they have completed it, we will have a formal commemoration, but we want to thank the good folks at Lowe's for participating in the community and helping us out with our facilities. And that concludes my report, but I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. The penises before council, we have a few here. The first one is Ethan Endor? Strickler, I'm sorry. I can't read very well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ethan Strickler. I'm a pastor at Thaksin Baptist Church, and I just want to offer you a little bit of wisdom and pray for you all. And it doesn't matter if you will share my faith or not. I think you'll find that these things are wise, no matter where you come from. The scriptures say in the book of Proverbs, whoever is slow to anger has great understanding. But he who has a hasty temper will exalt or lift up folly. And I think that's a good wisdom for all of us, as you have to deal with people in the community and with each other. Sometimes things in life get us distracted, and we have cares and worries and trouble. And it is good to remember that it is always wise to be slow to your anger and to be patient with others. The scripture also says that a tranquil heart gives life to the flesh. I think we all know what stress can do to us, and that stress is a killer. And so I want to encourage you to find tranquility in your inner person. I think I saw downstairs that it was this month, we were looking at self-care and how you need to look out for the different parts of yourself, your health, your mind, your heart, different, different things. And the scripture agrees with that. God says that you need to pay attention to your inner person. Envy makes your bones rot, the scriptures tell us. And sometimes it's easy to look at other towns and say, well, they have this. I wish we had that. Well, it's not really healthy as you look around in envy. So I want to encourage you with that. One last word of wisdom, it says whoever oppresses a poor man insults his maker. And that really sinks in for me, because I know the maker. I know the creator. I don't want to insult him. It says, but he who is generous to the needy honors your maker. And so I'd encourage you, if you have any kind of faith in a maker and a creator, you need to not insult the poor or anyone made in the maker's image and likeness. But all people are worthy of respect and honor, and it doesn't matter if they give it to you or not. I'd encourage you as the leaders of this town to give it to them, even if they don't offer it to you. And in doing that, you will have good success. Let me pray for you. Our Father in heaven, I come to thou in the name of Jesus Christ, and I pray for these men and women who are serving this community. I pray your blessing on them. I pray that you would give them patience and love, that they would be able to do well for the people of Bedford. I pray that in all of their decision-making, that they would consider you, that they would love as you have loved them. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. We thank you very much. All right, next one is Jennifer Cone.
Do you want me to come up now or during the public hearing part about changing meetings?
You can come up now.
Hi, Jennifer Cone, 3674 Forest Road. Been here before. You might know me from the Little Otter Flower Farm, but today I would just like to express my opinion that you should not change your meetings to once a month. The news is inescapable in terms of the animosity and vitriol in politics these days. And one of the things I love about Bedford, and you may or may not know, but I come from New York City politics, which is council meetings are a little different there. And it's just, we don't have that here, and I don't want to lose that. And I believe from all of my experience in public life, that being face-to-face, seeing people, being in the same room is critically important to maintaining that kind of cooperation and that kind of community and that kind of culture. And, you know, so logistics, from what I've heard, can be overcome. We could meet on the opposite Tuesday than the counting. We can meet on a Monday. But I think that it's important for this body to meet with the people that you serve and have an opportunity to be face-to-face. And it's harder to insult people face-to-face than it is on a screen, than it is on Facebook. And I would not want to see the majority of our politics in this town be turned over to a media as opposed to in person. So thank you for the opportunity.
Jennifer, you were ahead of me. You can come back up during the public hearing if you want. Yeah, I'm sorry. Either way, you said your piece. Yes. Anyone else that wants to speak on the date change? Would you want to wait till the public hearing part?
I'd probably prefer to go right after Jennifer, so you won't make the same mistake.
Come, come right up, Bill.
Thank you. My name is Bill Mosley. I live at 618 Westview Avenue here in town. And yeah, I'd rather get it over with now, because I don't want to sit here nervously waiting for the next 15 minutes to think about what I want to tell you. What I want to tell you is that we all agree, and I am, as you all know, I am a longtime Centertown business owner and building owner. And I know that you all are most aware of the issues that surround Centertown Bedford. They're massive, and you all talk about it. Each one of you talks about the need to do something here. And we brought in a consultant with a study that's ongoing, apparently. The idea that we then cut back to talking about these issues once a month seems to me flying in the face of saying you really want to do something here. As Jen, and I, Jen is an impossible act follower, so please forgive me. But just as she said, we need to be face-to-face with each other. We need to see each other. It's not about when it's convenient for you all to meet, whether it be preferable, you don't have enough to do or something to justify it twice a month. The public needs to be able to come out here once, more than once a month and be seen and hear you all. You know, to just do it once a month is kind of like any other organization's board of directors meeting, but that's, you're not a board of directors, you know? And in tandem with what Jennifer said, this consultant that we got from somewhere out there, Arkansas or somewhere in the Midwest, certainly not in Bedford, Virginia, probably has built into their budget a fair amount of money just for travel. I think there's probably little face-to-face communication, and so we're going to get, you know, and yet we're going to talk about once-a-month meetings to talk about these things. It's just, that's removing you all and the rest of us from that process. So that's what I have to say. I trust that you all will see your way to continuing on as we have for decades and decades at two nights a month.
Thank you. All right, Dee Finch.
Hi, my name is Dee Finch, 3563 Forest Road. I'm here on behalf of Community Pet Coalition. Some of you already know us, some of you don't. We will have a low-cost pet clinic in Bedford County. We are already working with Mr. Lohan. He will, they will give us a room at the shelter to put a clinic in or use it. We're hoping for a mobile clinic that is stationed there. So anyways, we've already had three low-cost babies clinics in Bedford County. The next one is coming up November the 8th in Montpel. And I'm hoping to hear from Big Island Emergency Crews in time soon, so we can keep going in March or April. And that's what we're doing, and we're hoping for a lot of support. We need a board of directors real bad. Hello, hello? Anybody want to volunteer? We need volunteers. We need money. We need everything. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Leslie.
Good evening, councilmen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I just wanted to voice my opposition to changing the council meetings from twice a month to once a month. I've been to previous meetings before, although not all of them. I do view a lot online, but some of your meetings do get rather lengthy. If you go to once a month, can you imagine what is compounded on top of that? Also, some of you know that social media has been ablaze today. In reference to this, I've seen comments that if you're going to once a month, cut your salary. You're only here once a month. I don't know that I agree with that, but that was one of the comments I saw. Someone else that has been a lifelong resident of town said that they were opposed to this as well, because small things can become big things if it is not addressed in a timely fashion. So if you go to that 30-day period, there could be something that comes up that needs your immediate attention, then what do you do? Do you scramble? Do you call a special meeting? Do you do it via social media? What do you do when something really important needs to be addressed within that 30-day period? We are a small town. You are our leaders. We must see you on a regular basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, council comments.
Well, I appreciate everyone being here. We hear your comments, and they are certainly factored into discussions that we have, you know, throughout the week, more than just, you know, twice a month. We hear what you're telling us, and we, I couldn't tell you exactly which direction it's going to go in tonight, but we hear you. Thank you for your comments.
Yep, and again, I'd like to thank your pastor anyway for your words of encouragement. I'd like to thank you for your prayers, sir. We definitely covered your prayers. And also want to thank everyone for, anyway, for actually showing up tonight. And I know we have a lot of people that actually watch us. It's YouTube, because I hear a lot of comments. People will actually stop me on the street, and they will actually talk to me about, hey, we watched you. And they really pay attention about everything that really goes on, every little comment that's actually sent up here. We take it into consideration, all of y'all's comments tonight. And one thing that's really been hitting me home here lately is a lot of people have been, they've been talking about our parks and wrecks. I tell them we don't have a park and wreck, but I tell them, if you're really interested in a park and wreck, come volunteer. Come clear some of the, some of the areas that actually need to be cleaned, cleaned up. And if you need to know that, just send an email to my email here at council, and I will put you in the right places. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming out. Appreciate the comments. It's kind of interesting that the town manager talked about Halloween and then the pastor talked about poor. I mean, I live on Longwood, so I don't know if you, you probably know that the thousands of kids that come out on Halloween on Longwood. So I'm going to be at the forehouse again this, this kind of thing. But anyway, it's a, it's a, it's a great event. It's a, it's a, like you said, it's one of those that the more, the more kids that come out, the earlier it is, especially since it's on a Friday. There's a, there's some concern amongst, that I've talked through some of the residents about, you know, safety of the kids and everything, because it's, I mean, it's crazy out there. I mean, I'm sure you guys have been out there. So it's the first year that I was here, and somebody told me about Halloween. I said, yeah, sure, sure, sure. And then when it happened, I was jaw-jawing, you know, so anyway. But again, thanks for coming out and
I just want to thank everybody coming out and all the comments. Just touch base on what Mr. Warren said earlier about hometown heroes. I would help get Mr. Warner and Tom involved with that, so we could get the grant from the other Lowe's. Was between 2,500 to 3 grand for that. Well, we'll take that money and put it towards the upper part of the building up there, up there where the upper fields are. Remodel, try to fix some of the outside of the building, the roof and stuff like that, so people can have a decent building over at Liberty Lake Park to use. So that would be a great event, and hopefully Mr. Mayor will come over and have a ribbon cutting over there after we get done with it.
Thank you, everybody, for being here, and thank you for your comments and concerns. We're listening. Again, I just want to repeat what Mr. Councilman Foster said, be careful out on Halloween night. The streets are full of children, so just drive carefully and cautiously. And then I'm also excited to see all the activity at the Flora, and I hope to see a lot of people there in the community at the open house coming up this 20th.
First of all, I want to thank the pastor for his words of inspiration to us tonight. I also want to bring up October the 4th, we had an event at Bauer Center. And I want to thank Heather Alto, Nicole, the Bauer Center, Leslie Mahaffey, Updike Funeral Home for helping us pull this event off for mothers of veteran suicide. If y'all wasn't able to come out to it, it was a very honorable and noble thing. We were, was able to represent 13 veterans. And it really brought out a lot of tears to a lot of people. It was a good event. The ladies got to stay here in town. They got to visit. They got to go to D-Day. And they said that we was one of the most friendliest towns that they have been to in a long time. And they're actually planning a retreat to come back here in May to visit our town and stay for a week. So it was really nice of them. Also, I want to thank Tim Griffin. He showed up and supported us with Bedford. I also want to thank Jen, Bill, Leslie, for y'all's comments, and Dee Dee for what y'all are doing with the pets. And we'll see what we can do to, well, not like we, but we, we'll see what
We're hoping for a lot of community support.
Reverend Henderson, it's good to see you out here this evening. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I'll wrap it up by saying it's good to see everyone here. Thank you all for coming out, and as usual, we have a topic of discussion, I suppose. A little things that I've been involved in the past couple of weeks. September 25th, I attended Excellence in Business event at Cedar Oak Farm, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. A very good event. Several other council members came. October 1st, I toured the mental workforce center by, or through the EDA with information session afterwards at the Welcome Center, which are very good. It's, that is taking shape, and I'm glad to see that, as I said then, I say now, good things take time, and it will continue to grow legs and keep going. October the 7th, last Tuesday, I attended a business roundtable at Bedford Library, sponsored by the Chamber again. And Robert Hisk gave a very good presentation, very informative. One last little note I've got here. I've had a few comments, and I'm probably guilty of it too. I don't always check my town email, and we get emails, we get phone calls. There's a lot going on. Bart puts a weekly letter in there that's full of information. Please check that out. Read that. It will probably answer some of the questions that you may have. And again, though, sometimes a couple of citizens email you and would like a reply, so please check that out. If you don't know the answer, call Bart, call me, or we'll figure out what to say. But do check that and keep informed. Thank you. Thank you. Report of council committees. I do not think we had any. And revisions to the agenda.
Yes, Mayor Stanley. There's one item we'd like to add to the consent agenda, and that is a request to close streets for the USA Semi-Quintcentennial Anniversary Kickoff Parade. We could add that under Item 5 on the consent agenda. Staff would request that revision to be made.
Okay. All right. Now, we're down to public hearings. Again, we have three public hearings. I will open and close each one. Whoever wants to speak during these, please just come up, state your name, address, and tell us what is on your mind, if you so desire. First one is fiscal year 26 grant rollover and appropriations. Mr. Warner.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Council of the Town of Bedford, Virginia, at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 14th, will hold a public hearing at the Council Hall located at 215 East Main Street to consider a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2026 adopted budget for rollover of multi-year grants in an amount not to exceed $9,191,514. Copy of the detailed grant and budget amendment request has been available for inspection in the Office of the Clerk of Council located at 215 East Main Street. This time, anyone who wishes to speak to the issue is cordially invited to do so.
This hearing is now open. Anyone that would like to come and speak on this behalf, please come up now. I see no movement at all, so this hearing is closed. Next one, fiscal year 26 budget amendment for general fund capital improvement items. Mr. Warner.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Council of Bedford, Virginia, at 7:00 PM on October 14th, will hold a public hearing in the Council Hall located at 215 East Main Street to consider a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2026 adopted budget for rollover of general fund capital items in an amount not to exceed $1,203,024. Copy of the detailed budget amendment request has been available for inspection by the public in the Office of the Clerk of the Council, and at this time, anyone who wishes to speak to the matter is cordially invited to do so.
This hearing is now open. Anyone who'd like to speak on the budget amendment, please come up and tell us what's on your mind. Again, no movement, so this hearing is closed. Next one, Amendment of Section 27 of the Town Code. Mr. Warner.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Council of Bedford, Virginia, at 7:00 PM on October 14th, will hold a public hearing in the Council Hall located at 215 East Main Street to consider amending and readopting Section 2-27 of the Code of the Town of Bedford to change the regular meeting of Town Council to the third Tuesday of each month at the hour of 6 o'clock PM.
All right. This hearing is now open. I know several have already come up and spoken about this one. If there is anyone else, please come up now, or if you'd like to come up again.
Mayor Stanley did want to make counsel aware and public aware. We did receive an email from Ms. DL Witt regarding this matter, and I would request that that be entered into the official record and attached to the minutes.
Thank you. Bill, would you like to come up again?
I just wanted to make one observation. And then, when this agenda came out to the public and went online, this item that we're dealing with said only Amendment of Section 27 of Town Code. How many folks in town are gonna pick up their Town Code book and try to figure out what the heck that means? I don't know why the rest of it was left off, but, you know, this might be half again bigger turnout if people had understood what that meant. So just that observation.
We'll make a point of that. Thank you, Bill. No one else? This hearing is closed. All right. Consent agenda request to close streets, Bedford Christmas Parade and Tree Lighting.
Central Virginia Business Coalition is sponsoring both the 2025 Bedford Christmas Parade on Saturday, December 6th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and the Tree Lighting Event in Centertown from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and is requesting the council authorize closing the streets for the holiday events from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the typical parade route beginning at Bedford Avenue Extension along Ashland, College Street, Peak Street, and Mountain Avenue in its entirety for staging. And then from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Peak Street from College, and the typical parade route comes through downtown along Red Street and into Washington Street, and concluding back again to the Westgate Shopping Center parking lot. Typically, this has been a request for the closure to happen on a rolling basis as the parade passes through, and the roads are normally closed just for that and immediately reopened. However, this year, the Central Virginia Business Coalition is requesting that the streets in the downtown area remain closed, and this is coincidentally the same area as where Center Fest typically occurs, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM in conjunction with the Tree Lighting Event so that vendors can also sit up on the roads during this time. Affected businesses will be notified, as well as the Police Department, Fire Department, and Bedford County Fire and Rescue. Tonight, Town Council is requested to consider the street closing request from the Central Virginia Business Coalition for the Bedford Christmas Parade from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and then the subsequent closure related to the Tree Lighting Event and presence of vendors from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Do you hear a motion?
Yeah.
All right. Councilman, get the weak tone, make the motion. Second?
Second.
Councilman Haley, what questions do you have?
So why do they want to keep the rest of the streets closed to the just South Street, South Bridge? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Didn't see nothing, thank goodness. We saw you back there.
Okay, yeah. So the reason we're requesting it to remain closed and to keep all roads closed regarding, not just South Street this year is because we want to make the event bigger. We've been doing the Tree Lighting now one on six years, and we've always had South Street, and we've had lots of other vendors that have asked to participate. We can't fit them all on South. Also, South slopes so much, it's hard for some vendors to have, you know, things on there. We partnered with the Farmers Market the past year and again this year. They're gonna be, they're gonna have a vendor market down there. They already have a waiting list for vendors that want to actually move up into the streets as well because we can't accommodate them all down in the Farmers Market. We also want to keep it closed due to safety reasons. We have a lot of people that attend this event, and they're going back and forth through the intersection, and we've had instances of cars not stopping. And, you know, we're just looking at it as a safety perspective as well. We also want to, like I said, grow the event. The carriage rods come through there. This just keeps it safe for the carriages and the horses. We're gonna be adding a new event to this event, sort of a stocking stroll where kids are gonna be able to take stockings and go door-to-door to businesses and engage with the downtown businesses as well. So we really just want to make this from Christmas Parade all the way through, just a festive way to spend time in the town of Bedford.
So you're basically making it a little bigger event with more vendors?
Correct. Yes. Basically, that's what we're doing. And the part about, you know, with the Christmas parades and not having the rolling is we've also had issues the past two years I know of where the parade has ended, and because of the rolling, the way they pick up the rolling closures. So Santa comes by, and then there's like just the rest of town just joins into the parade, and people are going out. We've had instances of kids almost getting hit at the Christmas Parade as well because those bear crates are being taken up, and cars are just, people are trying to get out of there. So this way, just keeping the town closed, I think, is a safety precaution as well, and just gives us ample time to get set up and to continue the event.
Any more questions?
You've done, the closure before has gone, if I remember right, from Northbridge Street also in the past. So you have had the whole thing closed before, just like this, just like the rest of the...
Yeah, I think the first year we did it, we had it that way. And then it went to just the south. But we're, now that it's grown so much, we want to continue, like I said, to keep it growing. But I just think, again, from a safety perspective.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
I've got a quick question. I mean, not to be Mr. Grinch, but does the town get reimbursed for the PD doing any, you know, doing their job?
No, actually, the town is the sponsor of this event. And we've been, like I said, we've been doing this the last six years. And we try to alleviate a lot of the work that the town and the public works does. We help them to pick up trash. We help with everything that we possibly can to alleviate any of that extra time. And actually, I think this is gonna be helpful to keep the roads closed because then they're not having to bring it back out, set it back out, tear it back down, set it back up. This, in a way, actually helps alleviate that, too.
I think we're done, Heather.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
All right. Appointment of member of Redevelopment Housing Authority.
Ms. Ann Duncan has expressed an interest in being reappointed to the Redevelopment and Housing Authority if appointed by council. Vacancy has been advertised in the local newspaper. No other citizens have volunteered to serve. And I think we actually have a couple of other available vacancies currently. Is that correct? So if anyone is interested in serving, we'd certainly welcome your interest and be happy to assist you with that process. Tonight, council is requested to reappoint Ms. Ann Duncan to serve on the Redevelopment Housing Authority. Said term to expire October 13, 2029.
All right. Do I hear a motion? Second. Councilman Haley. Councilman Foreman. I guess since we have two vacancies, we want to appoint Ms. Duncan.
I think Ms. Duncan has done an awesome job over the years being on that committee.
She has done a fantastic job. She's almost a mainstay there. You're exactly right, Stacy. Any questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
All right. Consent agenda for the American Legion.
The American Legion Board Candidate Post 54 is sponsoring the USA Semi-Quintcentennial Anniversary Kickoff Parade on May 16, 2026, from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM, and is requesting the council authorize the closing of streets. Again, I'm not gonna read all of them. It's the typical parade route that we're, hopefully all familiar with. It is published in the action item. Again, affected businesses will be notified, as well as Police Department, Fire Department, County Fire and Rescue. Tonight, Town Council is requested to consider closing streets for the Semi-Quintcentennial Anniversary Kickoff Parade on May 16 from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM.
Do you hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Councilman Foreman and Councilman Updike. Any discussion?
Just wondering if we could waive the fees for the American Legion on this. It's my understanding that this is gonna be largely a military display sort of thing. There is a fundraising thing sort of going on, but they would really like to have all that money funnelled back into the mechanics of the parade, not the fees for the parade.
Any comments?
I'll make a motion. We...
We're okay with it?
Yes.
Do we, do we need a motion on that, or just agree, or have consensus?
We need to do a friendly amendment and second.
Okay. All right.
And the post has paid the application fee, just in case we were curious.
I made a motion, so...
Do you want to make the, I can make the friendly amendment, amendment, that we approve this with that and waive the fees for the parade, or the event fees.
Second.
Any more questions? Discussion? All right. Roll call.
Mr. Foster. Mr. Haley. Mr. Ippolito.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
All right. Now, no old business, new business. Joint proclamation recognizing the 100th birthday and World War II service of Clarence E. Bill Wenzel. I believe that one is on the list. We have a proclamation here, joint proclamation recognizing the 100th birthday and World War II service of Clarence E. Bill Wenzel. Now, this is between the county and the town of Bedford. Whereas, and I'm gonna read the proclamation, whereas Clarence E. Bill Wenzel has been a patriotic citizen of Bedford County for 35 years, and whereas Clarence E. Wenzel has been a patriotic citizen of the United States of America during his century lifetime. And whereas Clarence E. Wenzel courageously volunteered to serve in the US Navy in World War II at the age of 17, served for several years thereafter and became a US Navy fighter pilot, serving on the aircraft carrier USS Tarawa, CV-40. And whereas Clarence E. Wenzel, after his naval service, obtained a degree in physics and worked in American defense and space industry, working on a nuclear-powered aircraft, the lunar module, and crew systems for the Freedom Space Shuttle. And whereas Clarence E. Wenzel is, Wenzel's 100th birthday is October 16, 2025. And whereas we, the Bedford County Board of Supervisors and the Bedford Town Council sincerely appreciate the outstanding contributions made by Clarence E. Wenzel and wish to thank him for his service and wish him a happy 100th birthday. Now, therefore, we, Bedford County Board of Supervisors and the Bedford Town Council, do hereby recognize the week of October 13, 2025, as Clarence E. Wenzel Week in Bedford County and the town of Bedford. I think we need a round of applause. It's an achievement just to reach 100. But to Bedford, what all he went through is not an achievement on its own.
Mayor. He's asking for a brief recess as a council.
Oh, okay. Is that okay? Okay, take a break, recess. Five minutes. Anybody else?
Can you email me the information, or the metal works? Because I want to forward that to some of the people. I spoke to some of the people from Virginia that do it. So if I email them, they may have a group that wants to come.
All right. Mr. Warner, fiscal year 26 grant rollover and appropriations.
Town has received numerous federal and state funding opportunities that include eligible spending periods beyond the town's fiscal year basis. After all audit entries have been processed, the remaining budget balance of certain grant programs need to be appropriated in the new fiscal year. The grant programs being reappropriated include a VERSA Safety Grant, a DMV Selective Enforcement Grant, a DMV Police Traffic Services Grant, a Rural Business Development Grant, an Otter Bus Phase III Grant, ARPA Relief Funding, which has been dedicated to water and sewer projects, a VDOT McGee Street Bridge Grant, FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, and the CDBG Phase II Hilltop Revitalization Grant. Total remaining budget balance of $9,191,514,000. balance of $9,191,514 is being requested for the grant program's rollover. And just to explain, this is money that has been previously budgeted and allocated. In the current fiscal year, we just take it forward. It's not new money and it's not an additional unbudgeted burden, but for accounting purposes, we have to place it in the correct fiscal year. Tonight, town council is requested to approve the attached budget amendment, which will appropriate budgets of the general ledger accounts listed related to these grants.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All right. Vice Mayor Updike, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Councilman Foster, any discussion? Any questions?
Just on the McGee Street Bridge Grant. Ain't the work already been done on that? I just asked that question.
It's underway, and I'm glad you asked that. It's through a program called State of Good Repair, which is entirely funded by VDOT. The bad news is, it's done on their timeframe. The current status of that is, there is design work related to improving and replacing the McGee Street Bridge that's underway. Currently waiting on Norfolk Southern to comment on those design drawings, and that's holding up that process. It's been seven years now? Six years? The good news is, it's free. The bad news is, it's not very quick. But it is proceeding.
Any more questions?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
Fiscal Year 26 Budget Amendment for General Fund Capital Improvement Items.
At the end of fiscal year 2025, there were certain capital improvement items that had been approved and appropriated but not spent. After reviewing the different items in progress, staff recommends consideration of a budget amendment that would appropriate the prior year fund balance towards the following projects. Phone system purchases of $15,000 for information technology, computer replacements for $20,217, also for information technology, equipment replacements for IT in the amount of $3,362, for the police department, body camera and mic purchases of $7,500, and the fire department, replacement of an engine truck at $418,417, and replacement of a ladder truck at $620,552. For parks, improvements to the infield for baseball and softball fields at Liberty Lake Park, totaling $92,800, and a telehandler purchase for the Joint Police and Fire Training Center in the amount of $25,176. Tonight, town council is requested to approve the attached budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts listed for these projects.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All right, Councilman Foreman and Councilman Updike. What questions? I mean, Councilman, excuse me. Haley.
Come on, don't make me laugh.
What questions do you have?
Only ladder truck and engine truck. Have they ordered that yet?
Yes, in fact, I'm... Thank you again for asking the questions. That amount, we have broken up the cost of that purchase. We're basically paying cash for these trucks and we're breaking that up into multiple years. Fabrication takes at least two years, so they've been ordered, but we've made the order and we've broken up the payment into different fiscal years to make it a little bit easier to digest. But yes, my understanding is, they have been ordered.
What else? All right, Sean.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
All right, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Amendment for additional state highway maintenance funding deal.
Town of Bedford has received notice of the final allocated funding from the state for eligible highway maintenance. The short story is, the state is willing to give us an additional $73,782 beyond what we budgeted if we're willing to accept it. Eligible equipment purchases is for things such as paving, sidewalks, all eligible VDOT right-of-way activities, including equipment purchases such as leaf blowers, weed eater, snow plows, et cetera. Tonight, town council is requested to approve the attached budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to accept the additional funding from VDOT.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Second.
All right, Councilman Foster and Vice Mayor Updike. All right, what questions do you have? Comments?
Do we know of any immediate need for the funding?
Yes. Several needs. Several streets, several sidewalks. We're looking at everything. And we are reexamining the way in which we resurface roads. We did do things on just kind of a regular, automatic basis. Tom Woodard is taking a more active role in actually looking at the condition of the roads and trying to address the places that have started to crack and crater, particularly in terms of asphalt, and addressing those rather than simply going over the same areas every time. We do intend to try to hit every street within a certain cycle, but we're trying to gear that towards areas of specific need.
So we will have a schedule of what areas it's going to go to?
And that will be attached to the annual budget, yes.
Okay.
Basically, update the sidewalk and pavement repairs to pick up the things that we didn't think we could pay for this year, but we can add to with the $73,000. That'll be coming to you.
Any more questions?
Are these sidewalks, center of town, phase II expansion?
Bit of a sidebar on that. Given some of the issues with the aggregate showing, particularly on East Main Street, I think we all recognize it. I've talked to Tom about the possibility of sealing and securing those without digging them up. We're still talking about a long-term capital project that would involve floor replacement, but as that involves infrastructure such as electric and utilities and will be quite disruptive, we want to do that in a way that is more comprehensive but palatable. In the meantime, we want to make sure that sidewalks are safe and attractive.
Thank you.
Don't we have a sidewalk list, too, or whatever?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is on it, there's five or something like that?
I'd have to consult it. I think we funded five projects this year, but I think there were about another seven or eight identified beyond that.
So would this be able to pay for that resurfacing, or is that going to come out of our general plan?
We could use this for the resurfacing, but we're looking at the operating budget for that anyway.
Okay.
It needs to be done.
All right, Sean.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
All right, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Amendment for donation towards police department evidence involved, air filter.
Town of Bedford received a $5,000 donation from Lyondale Buzell for the Bedford Police Department. Police Department would like for the donation to be used to add an air filter system to the evidence vault. Funds were received in fiscal year 25 and need to be appropriated fiscal year 26 from fund balance towards the building renovations expenditure account, which will allow the donation to be expended in that manner. Tonight, town council is requested to approve the attached budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts accordingly.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
All right, Councilman Evans and who wants to... All right, Councilman Foreman. Any discussion?
I can tell you it's needed.
I've heard that. What else? All right, Sean.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
All right, ordinance amendment of section 2-27 of town code.
At its regular meeting on September 9, members of council engaged in discussion about the possibility changing the date and frequency of regular town council meetings. No consensus emerged from that discussion. In order to resolve the issue, staff has been directed to advertise a public hearing and draft a specific potential amendment for consideration. Options include, but are not limited to, approving the specific changes presented, doing nothing, or negotiating something else that meets the objectives of a majority of council members. Tonight, town council is requested to consider adoption of an ordinance to amend section 2-27 of the town code to change the regular meeting of town council to the third Tuesday of each month at the hour of 6 o'clock p.m.
Do I hear a motion?
Before we make a motion, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to have a little bit more discussion on this.
We're either going to be up or down vote either way. So, I mean, we can make the motion, talk about it, so then take a vote. So, either way, it's going to be up or down vote.
I mean, I just... I know we have had discussions before before motions, so.
Well, it's council's pleasure on that. Discussion or make a motion? Either way? Okay, go ahead. We can discuss.
I mean, I just think this motion right here, I think we are jumping into this too fast. I think we should just take, maybe table this motion till after the first of the year, because we do not have three more meetings this year, really. And next year, maybe something will change in accounting. I don't know if it will. I can't say it will. But I said we just table this motion until next year and then come back and revisit it after the first of the year or after the first meeting of the year.
Well, either way, we're going to have November and December usually one meeting.
There's usually one meeting, yes.
Yeah, and so after the one in October, we're going to meet after one meeting alone.
But, I mean, the whole point is, really going down to one meeting is not giving the citizens what we need or what they need. And, you know, you're talking about going down to one meeting and limitation or whatever, going to 6 o'clock at night. I mean, you will limitate some citizens, because some citizens don't get off to 5:00, 5:30 sometimes. I just think we should table this out for the first of the year, because the supervisors changed that meeting, because the chairperson had to change it because he had a conflict of interest. Next year, when you come up first of the year, they change chairs every year. So next year, they'll have a new chair. So maybe the new chair might want to go back to a Monday meeting or whatever. They don't keep, like, the mayor stays two years and they see, or whatever. They change chairs each year after that. That would be my suggestion. I mean, three more meetings anyway this year, we're going to have anyway. So, I mean, in next year, we can look at it and revisit it. Maybe we can talk about it and then retreat some more. Maybe we can come up with some better ideas. That's my suggestion. And, you know, putting this on the way to agenda, I know one of the citizens made a comment, like you said, who's going to pick up the code book and read this? This is kind of blind side into the citizens, because they don't, some of the people don't even know what the section means.
I would have an issue with tabling, you know, as far as the citizens not knowing what it was. That's enough Facebook chatter. I'm sure, I'm sure people knew about it.
I think he did have Facebook. I don't think there's been any question for, from what I've heard.
Right.
Any doubt about what we're talking about. But, no, what do y'all, the rest of you think?
I don't have a problem with tabling it, but it's fine with me if that's what the majority of council wants to do.
And look at this, Mr. Mayor, we're going to have, y'all, we're going to have a work session that's Saturday, the 20th?
25th.
25th? I mean, do we really need a meeting on the 28th? We're going to have enough to talk about on the 28th of October. And, Mr. Mayor, you have the authority to have a meeting or council a meeting, because that is your power, one of your powers.
What do the rest of y'all think? Do you want to table this or take a vote? Let's hear it. Make an executive decision.
I'll second the motion to table.
Okay. Councilman Haley made the motion and Vice Mayor Updike seconded it. Okay? Any further discussions?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't want to talk about this during a strategic planning meeting. That's totally different than what that intent of that day is for. So I don't want to be talking about this during that meeting. I mean, I think we, if we want to talk about it, it should be, obviously, so the citizens can hear what you had to say and everything, for one. As far as, on the agenda, it may have just said 2-27, but there was, it was published on the 24th of September and the 1st of October, it talked about this is what this was, that this was for. So to say that we didn't give prior notice, I think is not correct as well. But I don't have a problem tabling it, but I think when we do talk about it, we talk about it in chambers, you know, folks press.
What do you think?
Let's table it and discuss it a little bit. Don't cause friction.
The only thing I'd say, Mayor, is we need to set a date that we would, if we're going to table, we need to set a date that we're going to bring it back up. I think because we need to discuss it, because we're meeting the same time as the county, as we all know. And whether we go to meet, if we do, like was suggested in the meeting, if we do go to two meetings, then we go the first and third Tuesday, we do it that way. But we need to at least have a date to discuss it, because we don't want to keep going and tabling it and then never bring it up.
I totally agree. And I totally agree with Councilman Foster in that this retreat, I don't think we want to discuss this at all. I mean, we got too many other things we need to talk about. Would you all be then in favor of tabling it until the next meeting? This month? A final meeting in October?
I would say next year, today, 18.
Now, y'all, y'all talk about this here. Y'all, give me y'all's thoughts. I would, I would like to get this off the table, up or down vote, and be done, one way or the other, before the first of the year. Because we're going to have two meetings or one meeting in November and December. So let's just make a decision, so staff especially will know what to expect going into the new year. I think we all have our thoughts. We've heard from the general public. We know, well, I've been told what has been said on social media, some, not everything, but at the same time, I think we're, we know enough where we can make a decision. So.
So, Mr. Mayor, you have a motion on the table right now to table indefinitely to Mr. Foreman's point, if you want to adjust that to table, to adjourn certain, I think you should, somebody should do a motion to amend that motion unless, again, there's a willingness to do a friendly, by the individual, amend the motion.
That's why I'm trying to gain the pulse, figure out the pulse here of what's going on.
I'll make the motion to amend it.
Until?
Until when?
Well, until the next council meeting, in October 28.
28.
28. 28.
That would be the second.
Final meeting of this month.
Yeah.
And then Councilman Evans just seconded that motion?
Second.
So then what you do is vote on the motion to amend, and then once the motion is amended, you would vote on the main motion.
All right. Do we understand that?
So what you're voting on now is to change Mr. Haley's motion to postpone it until next?
Till first of the year. Okay. That's the first one. Okay. All right, Sean.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
First we come back up on October 28.
You're changing it from going to the first of the year to go to the next meeting in October.
That's what we're voting on, for October.
To change the motion.
To table it until October 28.
Change it.
October.
The first motion was tabled indefinitely. The second motion, we got to vote to approve the second motion. We're not approving the motion, we're just allowing the motion to move forward. And we're changing the motion? Yes.
Are we clear? Okay.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
To the next meeting.
This is the motion to postpone indefinitely.
We're amending...
We're amending Stacy's motion from postponed indefinitely to postponing until October twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Then we will vote, assuming this passes, we will then vote on that motion to postpone until the twenty-eighth. It's a two-step process, it's Robert's rules of order, but we gotta amend Mr. Haley's motion first, that's what we're voting on.
No? Mr. Updike? Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with six members voting aye.
Now.
No.
Aye.
Now. Did Mr. Haley vote no?
So, now, Mr. Mayor, now you have the main motion on the table, which is to postpone it until October twenty-eighth, which is a separate vote.
Now, we're going down the home stretch.
Yes, this is the last step.
Are we clear? Twenty-eight, got you. Okay. Okay, go ahead, Sean.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
What motion are we voting on there, go, this is...
This is the now amended motion to postpone consideration of this ordinance until October twenty-eighth.
October twenty-eighth.
Right.
No.
Mr. Ippolito. Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries with five members voting aye.
All right, we will pick this back up on the October twenty-eighth meeting. All right, where are we now? The main event, the downtown strategy plan follows.
Oh, no, we do have, I'm sorry, I'm writing down the votes.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm getting in, let's...
Consent to assignment of a performance agreement. The developer of the hotel project within the town, DDA Armstead LLC, has reached the point of taking out its construction loan. In June twenty-twenty-three, the town and town EDA entered into an agreement with DDA Armstead to develop a hotel in the town. In the agreement, the developer agreed to develop a hotel, and the town agreed to provide grants through the authority and the amount of certain tax revenues realized from the hotel. The lender has requested that the town and the town economic development authority consent to assignment of the agreement as collateral for the loan. It is not at all unusual for a lender to request assignment of various other contracts, for instance, a construction contract as part of the collateral for the loan. However, it is less common to ask for assignment of a performance agreement. Nevertheless, it is not completely unheard of. If the bank were to foreclose, it would take on all the obligations of the developer under the performance agreement. This action indicates a level of seriousness on the part of the developer. Developer does not undertake the construction loan till he's ready to start work, which in this case has already begun, to be sure the performance measures are met. And although it's not specifically stated, we're talking about the Hampton Inn, which is currently underway on Berks Hill Road. Tonight, town council is requested to approve assignment of the performance agreement as collateral for the loan in accordance with the attached agreement.
All right, do I hear a motion?
To move.
All right, Councilman Foster, or how about a second?
Second.
And Councilman Evans, all right, discussion.
So, do they have the loan already approved before we sign this, or what's going on with this?
I'm a part of this discussion.
Part of the loan process is the data required, that should they default down the line, the payments would go to the bank.
So, with them asking for this request, do they already have the loan ready to be approved yet?
I would imagine at least a term sheet is prepared, and they're ready to go, and just finalizing the documents, although there's a reference in there to other, other secure components of the transaction as well, such as reds and leases and such.
Does this obligate the town any way in if something happens down the road, if they foreclose, or...
No more than you're already obligated under the performance agreement that's currently in place.
Should it pause back on the bank?
How about if it changes hands in that time, in the performance agreement about if it changed hands?
I'm not familiar with the performance agreement, I don't know the answer to that question, if the performance agreement doesn't permit it to change hands, is that...
No, it's supposed to, I think it's supposed to stay in the hands of the original...
This doesn't amend the performance agreement, so whatever the performance agreement said would still be the same, this just allows the borrower, the developer, to pledge the money that they're supposed to give from the EDA to the bank as collateral for the loan. If that money doesn't get paid in the performance agreement typically, unless they hit those performance metrics, whether that's investment, jobs, or tax, tax, increased taxes, and that only happens if they fill the...
I would speculate that, because this is now just going on, I'm sure it's been in the works, but the work we've been seeing done has been done by then. Yeah. So, I would say...
As far as I dissolve, indicating that the project's moving forward.
Yes.
And the action form is drafted by Mr. Washington, so...
Well, and the agreement has been reviewed, I know, by Mike and also by the EDA's attorney, candidate vice attorney.
All right, questions?
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven members voting aye.
Okay, now, downtown strategy plan. Sorry, I thought you said, no, I'm not doing it. While Mary's getting ready, I wanna say a few things here about this downtown strategy, this action plan. I would like for you all to get familiar with this, and read the information that's been handed out from the last meeting, it's some very good information in there, and some very good, as they say, a toolkit that we can use and implement moving forward, and to adjust the downtown area, address different things that we've talked about. And if we move forward with some of this, it is great, and I think we can say, as the old saying, I'm not gonna say change, but we'll make any difference. So, let's move forward, I mean, read everything you get on this, ask questions, and be familiar with this, because I really do want you all to be engaged in this and understand what's going on. So, Mary, it's on you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You heard a draft presentation on September ninth from Downtown Strategies, which is a subsidiary of Retail Strategies, which is not out of Bedford. We engaged the services of a facility, a facilitator, who is actually national, and they have been around a lot of blocks and seen small towns, and that's why they were the one chosen for doing the downtown strategy that you had briefly on on September ninth. So, we have finalized the work of that master plan, and you had a copy of the EDA's at your last meeting, and this now follows up with what that exactly is, and what I provided you this evening, or the get-it-done pages, I'll call it, the implementation strategies for the four points that are brought up in that plan. So, this is a summary of the action steps that were proposed in each of the four chapters that move us through a five-year strategy. It's an action strategy, it's not just a plan, so this only gives us a five-year horizon to get things done that will be actionable and visible in the community. It's not a twenty-year horizon like your comprehensive plan is currently underway. So, I wanted you to have, again, the nuts and bolts pages that you have there, they're included in your whole document, and the purpose of this, each of these four buckets, if you wanna think of them as that, for action, call for an action team to be set aside for policy and administration, design, tourism and promotion, and the fourth is economic vitality, and these closely mirror the four-point approach of the Main Street program, both nationally and Virginia, and to remind everyone, we are still a Main Street community at the exploring level. We are not a full Main Street, but we are at the exploring level. That's the, basically, getting into being a Main Street community, even though we already know how to do it, we did it for many years. So, taking it back to our roots for the Main Street, but just remember that. So, those four-point approaches are still something that are being proposed here, so, I'm not sure how best to walk you through this. Basically, each strategy ties into the plan, the action plan, with a timeline, the level of investment, and the partners that would take on each of those. But, again, each of these would be headed by an action team, so, your first step, however you would wanna take that, if you chose to do that, would be to design or set up action teams that would be responsible for each of those four.
Where are we at this point, Mary?
So, at this point in time, we've had some meetings with the core team, they're basically providing progress oversight during the, during the project. Those are two members of your downtown committee on council, Mr. Foreman, Mr. Ippolito. We had a property owner, and a, also, lives, someone who lives downtown, and then a business owner, who has been a spark plug for the program, has been involved in those meetings with the consultants. So, they're gonna turn us loose at the end of this month, and we can go forward with what they've given us. So, the conversations were had around simple things that could make a big difference in downtown visually, and that was to add string lights. I know that sounds really simple, but that's one of those things that's easy to do, shows people that something is happening that's bringing vitality to the downtown. The other conversations we've had were vacant property registry. So, those are things that we get to talk about, we've talked about how we've given incentives over the years, and the value of those since we brought that program back on in twenty sixteen, and then we've seen some success with that, but the other side of that is what we haven't seen, is the building investment. I think we hear a lot of that from the community, about how that draws down the value of those around those buildings that are not being kept up with. So, vacant property registry is on the table in this plan. We actually have a draft of that from Mike Lockey, something if you would ever wanna think about, something like that. It doesn't have a lot of teeth to it, it is just something that would require building owners to register, that the building has been vacant for twelve months. It doesn't require them to do anything with the building, other than to register that it has been vacant. So, those are the two of the things that we've had conversations about. I don't think there's anything else that has come out of our meetings. Mr. Foreman, or anything that came to your mind from those meetings?
We talked about, I think there's two things, and I was gonna ask a question about that, like the Christmas open house event, that was talked about in open house through some of the residents downtown, was the ones that are living downtown, if they'd opened their house to the Christmas door. I didn't, I assume that may be the open house event that's on here underneath the tourism and promotional, it's there with the mistletoe maker market, and then, I assume that might be that, or is that not on here? And then the parklet was the other thing that we talked about.
Yes.
And have you had any opportunity, or has anybody had any opportunity to talk to those who are listed on here as our partners?
As, well, as far as partners with Bauer, because one of the other things we talked about was activating vacant storefronts, where it doesn't look like it's nothing there to put art in the storefronts, and so Bauer is definitely on board with that and bringing part of the art mission further into storefronts. So, I've spoken with Ryan Stefan, the new director, and I'll continue talking with him later this month as well about that, too. So, first, we need to have contact with those property owners who would be willing to let us borrow their storefronts, so, we haven't made the contact yet. I wanted to make sure that Bauer was comfortable with that request for partnership.
You know, I think what Todd's talking about is kind of a loft apartment-type tour of people living downtown.
Yeah, that was one of the ones we talked about.
And I don't know how you would get that.
I'm not sure. I know of two people live downtown.
And then I was thinking of some of the short-term rentals, if they would open it up to...
I believe we have one that's currently in the law offices, two, we actually have two short-term rentals, kind of.
Yeah, and then you've got some that are finishing, I think.
We're aware of one of those.
Yeah. So, I don't know if there'd be somebody that would know, someone that could help us get, and we'd have to, of course, coordinate with them, but it may be, it's probably too close for this year, but maybe next year we could work with that, to have that downtown. Anything we can do to draw more attention downtown is what I was...
And that was, that's been one of the goals, too, as we've gone through here, is to increase the upper level living. We've had a grant in the past that would help overcome the obstacles of fire and safety and ingress and egress for getting in and out safely, so, we've done that, and we had four building owners take advantage of that, and one of those actually does now have someone living downtown, and that's, that's been a goal, because we know we need to increase the foot traffic in downtown of people living there, so that they demand the services beyond five P M. and before ten.
And that's kind of the ultimate goal here, or I might call it vision in its own way, in that if we get people, more people living downtown, then, you're probably gonna get, you like to think businesses staying open later, some new ones moving in, and then more people downtown, the more you're gonna get.
That will have the people living in the Flora.
The Flora, correct.
That's been a big catalyst, we've been putting a lot into that, and the fauna that will soon follow, we hope, with the thirty-five hotel rooms, that we know is gonna be a big catalyst for downtown.
So, we're gonna get the foot traffic from that, and it will increase downtown traffic, going to stores, going to businesses, and restaurants, so, the more downtown living we can get, the better. But, again, all that's covered in what Mary's going over, and just please get familiar with it, there's a lot of good information here.
Yep, that, yeah, if you have a chance to read through the plan, if you just find, again, the things that might be low-hanging fruit, and if you wanna start with the now, your nows on your timeline, would be a good, good place to start, and then especially those, the nows that have very little money associated with it are gonna be your payoffs that are faster in the return.
I have talked to Doug Barry about the Vietnam Memorial Courthouse, and he's totally in favor of a parklet, of that parking space there, so, I don't know, he's calling you or y'all?
We've met.
Okay.
He is, he is on board with piloting that there, that would provide a safe zone for people who would want to be there and appreciate the monument that's gonna be installed.
Yeah, so, so that would be, I would think, the first one in downtown, and we can model it from there and see what it looks like, but you're right, that's kind of the vision that we have, that moving forward to, as I say, or as they say, make it inviting to where you want to stop and go downtown, walk the streets, go in the stores, and that's the long-term goal here, just to make it inviting to where they wanna stop, walk, and do business.
You know, I was sort of reluctant to ask this, because I thought it might extend beyond the downtown concept that we're looking at, but since we brought up the advantages that the Flora and the fauna may be bringing to the downtown area, and I'm gonna give Councilman Foreman the credit for bringing this out, but what can we do about the area around the bridge over the railroad tracks? It looks, well, it doesn't look inviting, it doesn't enhance the downtown experience, especially if you're coming from the new apartments, the Flora and the fauna.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's the railroad right-of-way that, or right-of-way that we maintain, if you're talking about, but...
And I'm sure it is, but the question is, you know, what can we do?
What can we do? That's a great question. What can we do and what will we do?
Didn't the town cut that one down, the floor on the side, then that, on that side that parking lot?
It's easier to ask forgiveness than ask...
Well, that, and even, even washing the bridge up a little bit may help, 'cause we talked about that. Also, just making it look nicer, 'cause you want it to be, it's just what you're saying, you want it to be somewhere pleasant, where you wanna stop and get out of your car.
Yes.
You know, so those things, and this is an extension, as I recall, of the, what was it, the school-to-school?
Program, yes.
Yes, it is, so this is an extension of that, helping to move that forward also, and that's, and that was all about beautification of those areas.
That, that was the basis for this, they were instructed not to reinvent wheels, make this happen. We've implemented some of the things that were in this plan that you've seen from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, so they did not start from... and 2019, so they did not start from scratch, and without any idea of where Bedford was already going in conversations. They reviewed your comprehensive plan input from the surveys we had, they attended the meeting virtually, March 27th, and, you know, had other conversations and visited the community as well, to see what makes Bedford different, and this is what was tailored for us.
And a great example of how you made an area look nicer is right there across from the Napa, the parking lot that was built there, and there's green space put around it, and it made that look a lot nicer than it had been in the past.
The Department of Forestry grants were done there to beautify around Elba, and you saw what the county then did with that, too, on the lot that they own around Elba. And that's what this is, this is intended to catalyze and spark different things, so that others will join in and do their part to doing, you know, what is the responsibility of the town.
I would guess that once this gets going, and starts moving, then, Councilman Updike, what you're talking about will probably, it would be taken care of, because that will be part of the cleanup process.
But again, if it's not our area, if we have to get Norfolk Southern to, if they do this as quick as they're doing the bridge out of McGee Street, it's going to outlive all of us.
Well, I think, I think we can look at that more and more quickly, thoroughly. At least we'll get the town.
Would our ordinance, on the cleanup, would our ordinance, talking about grass and all of that, relate to that, and then we put pressure on them by, you know, holding them accountable for their property and care of their property?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we trespass in any way on railroad property, but I'm not opposed to us taking action unilaterally. Sorry, Mr. Attorney, did I say that the correct way?
I think we understand what you're saying.
Thank you. It's along the lines of asking.
Permission versus.
Do it and beg for forgiveness. Hey, Mary, what else you have?
I think just basically to connect you with what we've heard, and then just find out what you may be interested in starting first, that could give staff some direction for the vision that you see we're focusing on here.
Do we want to talk about that now, or did we want to talk about that, Mayor, at the retreat? Because I got, there's some things that I want to do that may cost us money.
I was kind of thinking that would be a retreat-type topic, is that okay?
Yes, sir, it's whatever direction you'd like to take this, because you need to know what it may cost you if you commit to it.
That's what I'm thinking, and that this would be a very good topic for the retreat, and then we'll have ideas and good input and good questions, and Mary will have good answers.
The, under the tourism and promotional thing, the mounted stickers, we've started working on those.
Okay.
But kind of for next year, because you know, the sidewalk, it'd kind of be a waste for this year.
Okay.
Which will be at no cost to the town.
Okay.
And I just want to say, those who've been on that committee, the citizens from the town, have been, have been great, and had a lot of great input, those that live downtown and work downtown, have really put a lot of thought into it, and have been really good on the committee. I don't want to name them, because I might forget someone.
Everyone involved.
That's why I said, all of those involved, and I won't miss anyone.
Good deal. Any more questions? You want to, okay? Mary, everything?
Just making sure no one else had anything they wanted to ask.
I thought he was going to ask.
No, I got plenty to ask, but I think it's, I think it's appropriate to do it strategically.
That's, that's my thinking, too, and Will.
For me, though, the thing is, is the last thing I want is this to be put on a shelf and get it done.
I'm with you, I'm totally with you on that. And then I've said this, and I'm not going to get carried away here, get on the roll, but I would like for this thing to be able to take care of itself, moving forward, that it knows what it's doing, that future councils can just say, oh, this is moving forward on its own, if that's possible. Thank you, Mary.
Yes, sir.
Anything else to come before the council? All right, where is my cheat sheet here? I am adjourning this meeting until 9:00 AM on October 25th, 2025, for a strategic planning retreat at the Bedford Public Library. This meeting is adjourned.